Do you want me to pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will ask that you write down any changes to the agenda.
There is. Item number 11 will actually be moved and go into closed session.
Any other?
I think that's the only challenge.
Add one item.
We'll add one item, but it will be in the closed session.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right. You heard.
That's it.
All right. If there have been no further, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you all in favor. If anyone has had a chance to look at the minutes of break for June 28th, the work of the regular minutes of July 19th, any emergency meeting for August 8th, please say so. I'll put it in for that. All right. If there are none, then I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Sure.
All right. All in favor. That is approved. Okay. Now we'll be closing the regular meeting and open the public hearing for 5311, the administrative, the state administration grant for transit and the capital purchase of service, of servicing programs for senior citizens. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Sure.
Thank you all in favor. All right. We are in a motion for the public hearing.
Good afternoon. I'm here to present the administrative 5311 grant for a resolution to apply for funding in the amount of total max $101,938, on local shares $15,291. The other thing is the resolution, I just need a motion for you to request, for a member to request it, that we approve those fundings. At first, I'll ask if there are any comments from anyone about your grant. Any questions from you guys? Our capital grant will be presented probably in October. They've not released it from the state yet to the vans and the new video equipment on the vans that we're going to apply for.
Do I hear a motion? Not in the hearing, but when we come back. So is there any other comments or questions for anyone? All right. No, I think one will be next. That's okay. I'm applying for the 5310s operating funds. This is for the enhancement of mobility of senior individuals with disabilities. The amount that I'm applying for is $94,686, which would look share of $9,467. Any other questions? Comments?
You said nine more times.
Yes, sir. I'm serious.
Ninety-six.
Top of my head. On this part, this part, yours is right. Okay. So it is 94,000?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
It is ninety-six. So the local chair, the secretary, is $9,467. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the field? All right. Now closing the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Do you have a comment? Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Can I say it, please?
Sure.
All in favor. And then we'll reopen for the regular meeting. Now we'll entertain a motion to adopt the 5311 CT grant, please, for transit.
Motion.
No motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you all in favor. And then we will need a motion to adopt the capital purchase servicing program for senior citizens, center. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Wiggins, is there a second? Thank you all in favor. Okay. The relevance changed. Is that question the commission here?
He's not here. I haven't heard from him this week, so I was, I never did hear from him.
That's probably not all that. I'll do it about anyway. We'll move along. Do we have Darlene Lovegood? Do you have an idea? No? Pardon? All right. I think we'll yield to Director Bryan Stevens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have several items to bring before you this evening. The first is an item of good news. I thought we'd start off with that. As of midnight on August 15th, 2022, Governor Cooper declared the state of emergency for the COVID pandemic over. In pursuit of that, it trickles down to the local governments to declare our state of emergencies over or terminated. That actually doesn't require a board vote. Just happened to be here at the time that needed to be done. And Chair, I have a copy of the termination letter in your stack there that just requires your signature. There still is, in effect, an executive order and written new statute for COVID response. So just because the state of emergency is gone doesn't mean that COVID response is over. There's still things, provisions written in law to protect us from where we can come out from under the state of emergency. So we're a little over two and a half years into it. I think it's something that we can look forward to, just that being over. That's the first item. And it just needs your signature, and I'll submit it to the state and get all that taken care of. The second is, it is time. In four years, we have to update our hazard mitigation plan. Several of the area local EM coordinators got together. We pulled some of our grant resources, and we got a contractor to write a regional hazard mitigation plan. I sent it to you in an email link because it's a little over 700 pages. It's quite lengthy, and I didn't think that we needed to print off seven copies of it. But it has already been approved by North Carolina Emergency Management as well as FEMA. It's one of those things that's akin to floodplain ordinance. We don't have to do it, but if we want to receive post-disaster mitigation funds, which are the funds that pay people to build their houses back, we have to agree to it and have to adopt it. So I've, there's a resolution there as well to be signed by the board. The other thing is space available now possibly at the EMS building. I'll let Manager Moreno speak a little more to that. As you know, we're staying in a building that was designed for 12 people, and we now have 24. So we need a couple more rooms, and I think that there's possibly a vacancy with what used to be the mapping office there, that we'd be able to put up some partitions and get the amount of space that we need. And I'll let him speak more to that if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. And we'll talk a little bit more about circumstances behind later in person and closed, or why it is empty. But I agree, I talked to Brian maybe a day after everything to see if he still needed it. Remember, we talked a little bit about needing room a long time ago when we went to the new shift, the change and more personnel. IT really can't move right now. There's a lot of reasons why they can't. And so we were looking at that. We talked about building inside, can we build outside, several different things. And this may not be the, whatever percent fix that he needs, but I think this will be good. And what I'd like to do with the permission and approval of the board would be, we're looking at space right now in Sophia's old office there, the tax assessors, where she used to sit in the courthouse. We pretty convinced that we can get two of the, what's left, two printers, the KIP and the new Canon that we just bought, into that office. We don't need an extra office space because the gentleman that was working for Chris is no longer with him anymore. So potentially, even if we, we'll talk a little bit about the mapping position, there's still some room there that we could expand into that office. So I'd like to move the printers to the courthouse to where the tax assessors can continue to print for people that need what they need, and then let Brian have the spaces to turn him into what he needs. He needs that, Brant, Hamilton is actually sitting in the training classroom, and he probably needs a little bit more privacy with the program he's running. Plus, he has a captain that's sleeping in a room there. That's his office. So we would like to be able to do that, to give him a little bit more room for what he really needs up there in the facility. So if we work together, if he needs it, the board will move forward with those alterations.
Does anyone have any questions for Jason or Brian?
Really good question, but I'm just kind of curious. Where are the employees that make all the equipment?
Which employees?
Whoever's doing the mapping.
Well, there's room there now where they're sitting in the tax office. If we, again, we'll go over that position.
For the printers and the person.
Yeah. There's some stuff that has to come out of that office. We've looked it over, and I've talked to the tax assessors, and I believe they can make the room and what they need to make it work.
That's what we used to do. Yeah. It's about taxes. Yeah.
And what we're proposing is just a couple of petition laws, not a free up enough space for the community unrest in office, which is ready to, really need to be secured as far as for KIP compliance, to keep people from coming in, and they'd have to listen to the media's records, and to petition off a, an extra bedroom and a storage room. Because as Manager Moreno stated, we do have the shift supervisors' bed, however infrequent they get to stay in anymore, is in the office, and it makes for some odd looks when the public comes in. And I feel that it's probably not very appropriate to the councilman employees in a closed room to be at any, so we're trying to remedy that as quickly as possible.
So that, please plan to take care of what you need for right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments for? Okay. Take care of it.
I guess my next item, I don't have the, the agenda is, we have angles to open. I'm also, when's the proper time to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if we would just open, announce who it is from and the price, and then we'll table this, if that's pleasing, to make sure that it is lined up, the specs that was requested.
About care of the public hearing.
This chassis in box.
Yes, sir. It's a full package. We didn't have the ability to do any rebounds this time because the boxes that would need to be rebounded have already been done, so.
And this is going to take two years, is that what it says? Something like that.
Something, the average right now is from two years from the, the order at the O, that's the going habit. So if we were able to get them a physical order within the next couple months, they figure it through the time of turning around.
Okay. We have, the first bid is for the lining of emergency solutions. The ambulance, Ford X3 5454 is $595,298.
Is that a two?
Two.
Okay. I was gonna say the one, eh?
Two. Two. Twenty twenty-two. Or do you?
I sense on the milli break. So it's gonna be two years, but we're gonna purchase a 23 chassis, and then it's gonna have to be sitting basically for two years.
From what I understand is, it will be the most recent model year when it's produced. They open their order portal, once the actual PO is issued, they open the order portal, get in line for a chassis, and then it'll be the most recent model year whenever we receive it. So we wouldn't be ordering the 2022 and then getting three years.
Yeah, okay.
It sits 2022, more than one.
Yeah. More than one would be expired before we got to use it. That amazes me that it's taken that long, but it is what it is.
All right. Then we have a second bid from Northwestern Emergency Vehicle in Jefferson, North Carolina. The total price for two ambulances, $521,070. Estimated delivery date, 120 to 150 days after the receipt of the chassis. How long is that, the receipt of the chassis?
That's the whole, that's the, that's the figure, is the truck body and seal. They're not having much trouble with all getting the conversion done after they get the truck.
I feel like shrinks.
He can't have not shrinks.
Took about a month and a year, if any, for us to pick up truck. He wanted to have about this time here. I think Ford Broncos, white list on them, one in six months, maybe more now.
Okay. Well, Keith's looking at that one. Actually, was that one fine quote on the first page? From Select Custom Accuratus in Auckland, North Carolina. And this bid is for $278,348.77 per unit. Pretty much all the information on this one.
I'm sorry, I missed that number again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Which will be $556,697.54.
$556,001.
$697.54.
Next, custom Accuratus. Okay. Then from Southeastern Special Vehicle Vehicles, we have PSI, $559,000.00 for two lifeline type, one pair liner ambulance. Okay.
Make a motion to table the bid until the specifications can reach you.
You'll want to certify, have a cert, our lights will all light before we.
So you can take all these?
Yeah.
Okay. It was everything for you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for Brian to take these bids, vet them, and then get back with us with recommendations. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor.
Just for partial, I won't until the next regular meeting.
Yeah.
Did you need a COVID number?
Yeah. I need a vote on the resolution.
Resolution. I'll make that motion to. Can I just step down as emergency disaster for COVID, whatever it's called?
I won't make a resolution for that. I just need the signature on me. I would, I do need a motion for the resolution on the hazard mitigation plan.
We'll give out the regional hazard mitigation plan.
Can we vote on that?
That's what we came down.
Which side is, I don't know if we, maybe we have to think about it yet, every hazard on that campus, please. Is there a second? And that's the hazard mitigation resolution. All in favor.
Two copies, yes.
Yeah.
Was that, that was the most expensive? They're the best, they're the most expensive. They're one of the, my, it was the five, twenty, the cheapest. So I did wish best for Silverado. We did attempt, like, mentions that there is a, it's going to touch, and it's involved in a complete package that, that's what I call, it's more reasonable to call it.
Yeah. So you'll be back with us on that.
Very good.
Thank you. You have anything?
I can give you two, if you will, too. I don't have any.
You do need to vote on that. Okay. Everyone understands that we have a problem about a donor ending the COVID in our industry.
Get some of the tables somewhere that you have signed, get a copy. You get a copy, have a copy, have the seal on the door. Should be two of them, one for him and one for our heirs.
Here you go. And we hope the board sees you at a future meeting. All right. We don't belong to our manager, Marina.
All right. Good evening, once again, everybody. If you'll look in front of you, you'll have your manager report for August 16th. And as you'll see, it's two-sided. Unfortunately, it's two full sides. So I'm gonna try to get through this relatively as quick as possible, and we'll move on from there. First item is just the update from the Grand County Forest Plan Objection. As you all know, we, we sat in here for a couple days and listened to the objection, which was basically all they were doing, they really didn't interact a whole lot. The Forest Service, they did ask for clarification on a couple things, but it was more or less just listening to what everybody had to say. And it was important to get kind of the what was next. That's what we kind of wanted to know, what was next. So I provided it here, so you'll, you'll be aware of that. And I touched, I'll touch a little bit on it, what the broad reflections were from the closeout session on August 4th. Basically told what they thought was, and that was from Rick Lynn, Bevity Regional Forester, and James Malorges, the forest supervisor. Rick Lynn, the forest stated, he will issue a final response to all objections, which will take into account the discussion from the August meetings. And we should expect that final response in October. A response may direct the forest supervisor to make some modifications to the plan, and will be the final decision by the agency. A recording and transcript of the meeting will be posted on the plan website within a week. Commissioner Wiggins and I have asked for Hayden Forrest for some additional time with him, and they're working on follow-up discussion with the Forest Service officials regarding specific issues raised by Grand County. So we're gonna be looking to do another follow-up meeting with him as soon as they can get it scheduled. Moving on to the next item, there's a couple of items with gladly some movement for the coronavirus, CDVG, which is for the schools and several other things. But I'll start with the neighborhood residency model of incentivization for the CDVG grants. We, we've got our RFPs, I think we, Commissioner Nels, did you get your?
I'm ready.
Okay. That's all we were waiting for. She was waiting on the committee to review the RFPs for the survey engineering services. We have one more review, and we'll be able to put those forward to the contractor who's working on managing these CDVG grants. And that will be our recommendation. North Carolina Commerce finally gave approval for sole source procurement for environmental services and legal due to lack of response to the three bid cycles. It is a challenge due to applications, as well as the CDVG guidelines have been sent to the homeowners. So we put in the mail, I signed, was it five? I think there were five that we put in the mail out to the homeowners, informing them that we will be reviewing their, their applications. They have to put their applications in, so we'll be reviewing those. So I was glad to get that much of this out to the people that are out there in the, in the public, to know that they're gonna be considered for some of this help. So we do have those signed by me and put in the mail out to the folks that couldn't stand a chance to get some help. When the housing specialist is placed, they did, did again for the housing specialist, the side visits will occur, and the bidding process will take place for the work. Commerce has issued a fourth extension due to delays caused by COVID, procurement issues, and commerce not being fully staffed. Miss Bucky Man with the grant administrator via phone last Tuesday, and based on where we are currently, they feel that the project will be, will be complete within the extended timeframe. However, they are prepared to work with Commerce on contingencies as they arise. We feel that we are finally moving off the start with the project, and it's been long and frustratingly slow, needless to say. You know, we've seen that same thing with great. You know, we've seen that same thing with Grace, with Michelle Ship, but she's struggled with hers part of the grant as well. So that's good news on the neighborhood revitalization. Unless there's any questions, I'll move on to the coronavirus, CDVG, and the schools. There's really not much update on the school side, so that paragraph really didn't change. But the Imagination Hub or the Internet Service Resources for persons looking for administered or administered by United Methodist Church, all procurements completed, payment issued to vendors. The CDVG funds were reimbursed to the county in July, so that's good news. We did get reimbursed for those funds that went out for that part of the project. With regards to the senior center, we're still working with those, some of those procurement issues on that. But I did meet with the grant administrator and we're working with Commerce on getting approval for the design build contract, which was the way we would like to see that go out in bid. It will save some time from having to do RFQ for design first, go through that approval process, and then send that design out for bids. You can do the design build process that will allow you to do both at the same time, so that'll save us some time. We're working on making sure that that's all legally possible with Commerce. And as I mentioned, the update on Grace Place, Michelle Ship were reporting last Thursday that they finally have successfully gotten three bids in hand for the work to be done due to increases in construction costs. We are requesting to amend the project budget to transfer funds between equipment and construction. And over on the other side, Grace Place sufficient funds for equipment due to having other grant funds available. The budget change request is ready for the board chair to sign. So you should have that amendment to sign on your desk, I think, with Baker.
Yes, there's a letter plus the budget amendment itself. It's actually a letter from two farmers.
Think that's it.
That's it. Yes, okay. We will take it forward though.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. A motion. Approved by you, is there a second? Thank you all in favor.
And then last on CDVG, in this training, the grant administrator had met with the staff to begin the process of procurement equipment needed to enhance training of the new staff. Purban has been tough, but this project is moving along as well, can be expected in the buyer and as well as can be expected in the environment we are currently working on. So that project is slow as well, but we're getting some progress as we move forward with the CDVG. And again, I think a lot of it is actually with some of these things loosening up. We're finally getting to see more people communicating, more people willing to do a few things. So we're confident with what we're communicating with Commerce and out in the public that we're going to get these things going pretty solid. All right, if there are no questions, I'll move on to the next item. The Grand County Closed Landfill Water Quality Monitoring. If you'll notice, I provide in municipal engineering, we should have that as one of your package. That's the new work plan that was approved through North Carolina DEQ. And again, I'll touch base on what we discussed at the last meeting. We were clear to move forward with doing the three wells this time, cost estimated at sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars with a fifteen percent contingency. But as the board requested the last time, the board wanted to hear from the NCDEQ about the possibility of being sure to discuss and put off any other additional work until they have a chance to be able to present it to the board before they request anymore. And she did approve that. As you, when you look through your municipal engineering, you'll see the current work plan for, that was approved by her, and the email that she approved resubmitting that new plan also with the intent that in the event there is a need for additional assessment, the counter request, discussions be held with the Department of Waste Management and any agreed upon work we schedule for future fiscal years. And Ms. Ritter did approve that. So as long as the board is still good with what she provided, we'll move forward with that sixty-one thousand. But they already have been scheduling to get the drillers on site.
Sixty-one thousand eight hundred.
And that was the price provided at the last meeting that you approved, as long as we wouldn't be able to discuss anything further going forward.
And that would be a help to close that project.
There was no, I couldn't get the state to say that it would close it completely.
You tried.
I did, just because of the, what their concern would be is if they put the two new wells below and then they see something, they may, if it's going past them, they may have to do another one, depending on that, what it comes from, the results of the monitor. And that's really what it's for, so.
And so we already voted on it. So we don't need any other action on this, thank you.
I just wanted to confirm what you guys have requested on getting from the state. The best I could get from them agreeing on how we're going to go forward. We will at least get, from my understanding, we will at least get a meeting with them if they start talking about additional work. And it would be put off, obviously weighted and budgeted. We would want one budget, but be able to meet with them and let them know our concerns. All right, if there are questions, I will absolutely move on to the next one. I did get a response from Senator Gillespie's, or Representative Gillespie's officers, which includes Senator Corbin. They can meet with the board, and I also talked to Superintendent Knight, she can be here. And they wanted to make sure the board could be available on Thursday, September first, in the community room at ten eight. And that is the meeting the board requested to cover on several things. It's the unfunded mandates by the state and then some other things we'd like to get help for, especially our justice. So if the board is good with that date and time, I can confirm that with Andrew Bailey, which is Representative Gillespie's legal assistant. Again, he did check with Senator Corbin, and he and both will be available on that day.
Do you have any conflicts on that? Hey, Jacob?
No.
Can we video the meeting or something?
Yeah, I think we could set up, if you wanted to.
Video the meeting for you?
If you wanted to set up on the, like we did, I could do that for you for sure.
Will you pay for that day? He said here first. Okay. Dale?
Yes.
Yes, great.
All right, great. I'll confirm that date, and we'll plan on being here with the Senator and Representative.
So that plan will get.
And then we can have, we'll set up the laptop so we can, then we'll do a Zoom or a Teams meeting, send out.
Okay.
Yeah, however, whatever we can do, absolutely. So that's good. September first, ten o'clock Thursday. All right, move on. The Lake Santita cleanup, I'll touch on it a little bit, but we'll, we're actually, you will go over this as discussion items, so I'll just hit on it real quickly. The Lake Santita cleanup, it's similar to the Fontana Lake cleanup. Maxie Williams has newly formed Lake Santita Preservation Group, is working along with other businesses to conduct the lake cleanup on Saturday, twenty-four September, twenty-twenty-two, and has requested to waive the dump fees. And again, we'll go over that in discussion items here shortly. I also provided the update for the next item. Provided the update of, after we did the resolution and went and talked about the Great Smoky Mountains parking fees and camping fees. They have, the leadership announced the decision to adopt the parking tag program and to increase camping fees beginning next year, March first, twenty-twenty-three. You approved parking rates, our five dollars for daily parking tag, fifteen for parking tag, for up to seven days, and forty dollars for an annual parking tag. I gave you kind of their description, provided their prescriptions. The description of what they did when it came to the parking fees that they agreed upon, unfortunately.
I was kind of amazed, went through the fact that there were so many organizations, governmental, advertising, public, city.
That's what it said. It said sixty percent of Grand County was for it, apparently. I don't know where they have that.
And I think their bourbon was pretty much the same on the first place. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Ed.
There were one seventy-five, but they still have.
I think so.
So they come to my list. I talked to them. I shoot for twenty-five, go for it. You can't park wherever they may. That's it. If you don't get caught, you'll pay them.
Right. You can do it in a zero.
That's right.
Okay.
All right, I, we'll move on to next to last item, the Grand County Sussquintennial One-Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration. I've provided a lot of the information to you guys, and I wanted also provide it here. We also wanted to make sure the public knew that commissioners designated on the ninth day of August twenty-two, to my proclamation, that August twelfth, twenty-twenty-two to August twentieth, twenty-twenty-two is the official celebration of the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of incorporation of the County of Grand. The Grand County Sussquintennial One-Fiftieth Celebration Committee scheduled all the events. The celebration that kicked off last weekend of August twelfth and thirteenth in Fontana and Stechola respectively, and closes out the weekend of nineteenth and the twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, this coming weekend in Robbinsville around the courthouse. The committee has requested commissioners specially consider attending the commencement on the final day of the celebration on August the twentieth, twenty-twenty-two at ten-thirty below the courthouse next to Town Hall, with possibly Chair Orr and any or all of commissioners speaking prior to kickoff of events on the final day. Really good. Good effort that they put on for the one-hundred-and-fiftieth. Then the last item, you should know that, notice the book that I went to the NCACC last week down in Concord, Carveris County. And really, there was a lot of interesting programs that they were putting on. There were things about opioid settlement, ARPA, are aging communities within your population. And then they had the mapbook, and I provided the mapbook for you to look at. It's about sixty-two pages, and it's really quite informative on, it talks about the age, ages per capita, population per capita, your tax rates, tax value, a lot, a lot of really good information. And it covers all the counties and ranks the counties. So I wanted to provide that from the NCACC conference that was last week. So you had that to deal with.
It's important that they're every year, and they do, they update them every year. And if you want to look at a county about, the metropolitan counties, this is how you get the pokes of the other counties, it's a good place to find all the information.
That's absolutely correct. It gives you really good perspective when you hear talking about this county in this area or that county in that area, really gives you perspective that has of all the counties. And you can look at it from that angle as to who did his work. So it is really good informative information. And if there's no questions from that, I'll move on to the project manager's report quickly. We did on the number one item, and you should have that on your desk as well. Number one item is the RBA new spring subdivision. Good news, in meeting with McGill, Anne, D.R., the materials should have been on hand last week. And with everything that's looking at being complete, we're hoping to complete this project by September first. So by the end of the month, we're hoping that everything will be complete, and hopefully final bill out by September first. So that's good news. I'll be checking probably status this weekend next to see where we're at, and then we'll go from there. But that's about the best news we've had, because there was delays with that material as well, too.
Been a long time ago. Thank you.
Has Andrew been in the meeting? Has ever had a chance to work in on the location?
He's not, I don't think he's physically worked on it. He's taken notes from me as to what we were kind of talking about, how to look at it. I know he said he was going to, he was going to get with me and then talk to you about how we wanted that to look.
Are you meeting tomorrow?
We do.
If it'd be possible, he could join us.
I've asked him, but I'll double-check to see if he's.
That'd be great.
I know he's been able, he's been doing some time at home or working because of some issues with school. Let me follow up. Yeah, I'll follow up and verify that.
He had a good field from one to four, their input will be very helpful.
Yeah, a hundred percent, I agree with that. But I'll definitely check and move in.
Okay, thank you.
Item two is our cemetery building. Good progress on that as well, total site. They just need to do some seedings, grading and seeding, all the utility services. Rough ends are done, they've shaped the site up away from the foundation, so it's all flowing away from the foundation. They just needed seeding, and this is coming up on the time of year to really do the grass seed. So that's good on the outside. They've basically completed the framing on the inside. So we're about seventy percent complete with the project and really moving forward. And we started our rough ends on the inside, our mechanical MEP rough ends on the inside. Item three, the recreation in the building is not as far along other than utility, utility rough ends for the service for the water. Sanitary and electrical is complete, and that site is shaped up as well. There's still some seeding and a structure that needs to be put in for drainage on the site. And so it's ninety-seven percent complete on the civil and sixty-five percent complete total project. We're going to call the board elections on item number four. That project is a hundred percent complete, and we're moved into phase two. We're about fifty-five percent complete. All the demo was completed in the phase two, which is just the women's bathroom. The, we did all the demo, and we started roughing in all the water in the sanitary. So we're moving really good on that project to get it as complete as well. So we're about fifty-five percent complete totally on that project. And I got to get Ms. Waney to help me on some selections. Tyler. And item number five, the Justice Center. I'm happy to report we did get three submissions for qualifications and probably get, try to get the committee together next week to start going reviewing those. I've taken a look at it. We did got from Slam Gary, who we worked with to do the program, initial program. And I think they also did, was it the Haywood County? I think it's the Zine Haywood County's courthouse. That's still, Copen Associates, which is out of Knoxville, they've done several. They provided, and then Mosley Architects, who was actually out at NCACC. I talked to them when I was at the conference, who have done several justice centers as well. So we have three very qualified design teams that submitted their qualifications and are interested in working with Grand County.
I just spoke to you just on a brief basis about getting the same information that we have Justice Center up on the hill, using the current courthouse and the surrounding areas to build what we need there. You could have a chance to look into that at all.
Do you mean you're talking, are you asking about the other, like, courthouses in our area?
I'm talking about our courthouse, but that's now.
Oh, you're talking about building up there.
Justice Center and the jail, and the area near where the courthouse is.
Yeah, the, I guess the intent was, once we decide with the team, I would approach them to see what we could get out of them, because it's really going to be them deciding what area is going to work best for the footprint that we need.
I think that does sound more of a long at first. And I think we did that, and I'm just one of five. But I'm certain that I could have that looked at myself.
Yeah, and I provided also the board with the other property that's on the Jason.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's going to be a challenge, I think, to put anything where our courthouse is and the old P&amp;J building, just because of the. where our courthouse is and the old P&amp;J building just because of the, where the, you know, the topo, topography of the area and the, you know, the.
Yeah, but it's a challenge to put where your top of that.
Yeah. It's a challenge. It's going to be costly either way. My feeling is, and it can go either way, but my feeling is you don't have, the parking is going to be an issue either way we do it, no matter where we put it. But we do, we did engineer being able to get in and out a little bit better up on Four Hill than we would there if we're just talking about jail and that's different. But if we're talking about a complete facility, there's two ways to look at it. Like on Four Hill, we had a sheriff and a jail which had their own entry and exit. So they, they wouldn't share that with anybody else. And then the all the other systems would have its own entry and exit where they didn't have to, you know, mix and match. So a lot better. And that would be harder to do, I think, up on the hill with the limited space that we have. But again, it's, it's going to be what the board wants, depending on what, whether, what we're going to do.
And I may be the only one that wants that, but I would really like to see that.
I think it's something we should discuss once we just come up with a design team and have them look at it.
It'll be something to look at.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be all the plats, the golf plats and survey that just to see what the topo is, just like we did up at Four Hill. We gave them all of that for Four Hill where they could build, you know, they could do their heights for, you know, the wall, the tanning walls that we might need, parking areas and all that thing. And that was the reason why we did, we went to the extent we did it at Four Hill so we could, I think we were able to make it to where we could at least get two hundred parking spaces up on, on Four Hill. So that's kind of what we were tracking from there. Not that we need that much, but that was what we were thinking regarding jail, sheriff and all the justice employees that'll be working there. So they'll need, they'll need a little bit of information to be able to go from. We get that, we can, we can provide that to them once they start the design.
I'd certainly like to say the courthouse and I think the huge courthouse is courthouse.
Yep, absolutely.
This is theirs where you have court for two years.
I don't know.
We're in the headroom there.
Only he was in office when I had court to your library. Their renovation had a little big issue. If we, whatever, I would know that we need to have a place to build, just like um, this building, you should have a courthouse. We're not in this office.
I think it would really be good to have public interest, too.
It needs to be preserved no matter what. We certainly don't want to get the courthouse going away. I don't. But that tip of the earth would be a capability. That's great. We've had, we've saw that back down there. Just getting the building out of the burrow is going to be a challenge. And then parking. But something good.
And I think a way we talked about approaching it, too, was we could even with this design team, and it, it could be a phased approach. We knew we would always wanted to renovate the courthouse because it's going to stay. There will be, it'll be up to the board, obviously, what happens, whether admin moves back in or it becomes whatever. We could always have that estimate put in as a phase when we enter into this with design team. Okay. Once we build the new justice jail or whether it's up there or off Four Hill, what can we do after everybody moves out, move into phase two? What would it cost us to renovate the courthouse to redo the jail and the whole space that's before it wants and that sort of thing. So I think there's still a possibility of being able to do that in, when we start working with the design team. They can look at the courthouse after they get our initial plans for whatever it is we build and then tell us what we would be looking at. And who knows? I mean, we, we're looking at potentially doing a mixture of traditional brick and mortar to a PEB or a metal building, which I've seen designs of that already that's been done. That could bring that cost down. And then maybe we could also put some money into the courthouse. We could also meet with the state legislators and maybe they can help us get a little bit more money like Speaker Moore's county got.
Speaker Moore's county got that. They had thousands, many people living in that county too.
Indeed.
And that's why I said it's my house then.
Yeah. But I would love to be able to see some sort of dollar figure or design put into what we want the courthouse to be. Because it's going to be, we're going to keep it. It's going to be preserved. They did a study, you guys did a study on the foundation. It's incredible. I mean.
It was solid.
We, we saw the old plans. There's walls that are, but there's nothing probably stronger in the county than that building.
Yeah.
So it, it really, basically the building is an infrastructure, you know, that's, that's, that's the project for it. It's the water, sanitary, all your electrical, all that stuff really needs to be redone. There's some architectural finishes. There's some, some, there's some abatement of some other things in the building that has to be done that we know is there. So it's.
I'd like to see a picture of what it looked like with getting the jail, another courtroom, if it needs to be like across the street. I don't know, live straight open or close the street connected. I don't know. I'd like to, I'd like to see some architecture, architectural drawings or.
Like a rendering?
Or what that would, what that would look like.
I think we can do that once we, with this design team. I mean, once we hire them, they're going to be working for us. It's just understanding what, what I think we do is once we start, we ask them to give us a cost. What would that cost? And we could separate the two.
We, we won't know what we're even considering unless we've got that kind of drawing for what I'm asking for. And I don't know if the rest of the board wants that or not. Here, here probably we're.
No, I'm curious, but we have one that our board of the jail, where they look at that round.
Right.
Now, but a land plot around there possibly might be some.
You, you might, you might get it. It's three acres. We got about, I think it's what, about eight up on the hill or six. I think it's about six up on West Four Hill. Not counting. It's a little bit more than that with that upper flat area. I'm just incorporating what we had the study done. So.
Probably looking at setting more levels in, in the property across the courthouse. What are your thoughts, Lynn?
Where we can build, what we need to build.
I'm not everybody built this session because you remember all the time we started this news. It was really difficult to get that called. You never like that physical house to me.
Yeah.
The sand.
I don't know what that means. I want to see what he puts.
I don't like, I don't like any of the shilling.
I do know.
But I find that they designed it. You can type multiple locations and make it present as a condition come up and stuff.
Yeah, they can work, build.
So you'd be able to.
Maybe then we're a little bit of places in the community. It's like, you know, I'm going with this here and I can, I can tell you.
I'm not sure if we would be over what we need on this other land for the big work.
Yeah, you're working. We could come up. And that, I don't think a lot of these.
The jail would just be able to.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry.
There's going to be small footprints around because of the sort of.
Yeah.
I did let these other places on, they just wanted to turn them on some more shots and like that more and more. And they'll tell us why this is what she did, this is what she did, this is what she did.
And it's going to look like this.
They could do a rendering, yeah.
Okay. Like board is that deep?
That's no, no issue there. That would be, that'd be actually very interesting to see. Okay. No other questions? I'll move through relatively quickly. Again, number six, I say again, the school would love to be a guy. Can you get a chance to walk through over there? The reporting total project, eight-five percent complete. WBI, which is Western Builders, and we'll talk a little bit about this enclosed, has asked for a general conditions adjustment. So we'll talk a little bit more about that since it's a contract enclosed section here a little bit later. Item seven is the Little Snowberg project. I've asked our engineer, Jonathan Hinkle, to be available from GPI to talk, to discuss it a little bit more. We had the, this will be closed for the contract that we have with GPI. We had, NRC, NRSC actually came out and conducted a site visit on August the ninth, the guy from the feds. And he gave, I'll provide that information from him, his initial assessment, but he's still going to provide another one. But enclosed, we'll discuss a little bit more about where we think we might need to go. I'm there talking D-Scope, but we'll talk a little bit more about it since it's under contracts with our engineer. I've talked to also, that was out down on the coast, the number eight, Charters of Freedom on the Monument project. It was funny, I'd gotten a call from the gentleman from Charters, the monuments up there between the Howe Building and Urgent Care. And he had heard that it was in, it was in bad shape. But we got, I actually worked to get the bricks laid. It actually looks really good. There's some, I looked at the tops of the faces where they put them together. There's some caulking that needs to be redone. So they're going to come out, the gentleman that does these things is going to come out and do a site visit. We'll do like, I'd like to see a little bit more landscaping around concrete because the footer's kind of sticking out of the ground. Want to get their, their ideas of what to use in the past and then redo the caulking and sealing that up. It doesn't look real good. So there, we'll do a site visit and do some punchless items on that to get that done. And then lastly, I've just added the Grand County Recreation Pool resurfacing. And that project, we awarded that contract and it's supposed to start next month as soon as we close the pool. So we're excited about that. And again, I provided the metal schools status for that project. If there's no more questions, that's all I have. We'll talk a little more further.
Any questions for Warren? All right. Thank you, Senator Reno.
Okay. So good evening. I'll try to speak up. I'm having a word with Ash because of COVID exposure and finance. I'm down to one person in finance. So just say it for bugs. Our Jennifer Tesh reconcile balance for July thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two is eight million, six hundred, six thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. I'm down just a little bit from this time last year, but it is rebounding from where we have had a lot of projects going and, and so we're in pretty good shape for taking all those things we said. You also note the balances in our capital project fund in our American Rescue Act. The capital project, capital management trust account that we set up several years ago is at two million, nine, twelve, six hundred. We have, still have the hundred fourteen five and the sales tax. Capital project for the school, that'll go toward debt service on that new law. I want to jump down to the SCID grant. We're at five million, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. The good news is that in our capital management trust accounts, we earned a little over eighty-five hundred dollars in interest for this past month. That, that balance is continuing to grow. And then our ARPA account is at nine oh two, five oh six. You'll kind of page each four. You'll see our property tax collections. We're at seven eighty-seven, five fifty-four for a real property. And then EMV or BTS with sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. We're tracking a little bit more. We were this time last year in a real property, but about eight dozen ahead on BTS. We had a few little issues with getting tax bills printed. So I think it's a day or two delay. But I'm also thinking too that this is showing the impact of inflation on people's household budgets. They're having to wait just a little while before their property taxes. The VDO is at, our tax collection rate is at eleven seventeen. This time last year is twelve sixty-five. We have not, I see the utilities allocation yet. Hopefully that'll be this month. So the levy of six point nine million, we're just waiting for the Department of Revenue to send us the information. We should be very, very close to this past year's revenue. If you look on page six, you'll see our operating results in the general fund. We rebounded this month at one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand in revenue. Expenditures were one million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand for a little over four hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars surplus now. That number might go down some as I put accret revenues, but that's pretty healthy for this time this year. So I'm really grateful for the additional revenues that we received. And then sales tax continues to give us good news. Modus, we got two hundred fifty-nine, nine thirty-four. That's on page seven for the month. And this time last year, we were two fifty-five. So we're about to level off, I think. However, we have had basically over the last decade, a hundred and thirty percent increase in sales tax. It's basically level from where we were ten years ago. And we were, and that's exclusive of our quarter cent. We got about twenty-six thousand dollars in the quarter cent. That's about the, what it's averaging out to be every month is about twenty-six thousand dollars. So I've got about fifty-one, six that I'll need to transfer into the capital project.
Thank you. I think we might say that the sales tax increases good news values.
Yeah, yeah, because it's a function of inflation, unfortunately.
The cost of goods.
Yeah, yeah.
It's painful in this county, I know that.
Exactly. So it is. It's, it's a double edged sword for the sales tax. And I'm going to skip on over to page nine. Page eight is just the, what we, I believe is back taxes. Page nine is our capital projects. We have spent a little over one ninety-five on the election award and back funding renovations here in this building. So far, we're just a little over eighty-nine thousand in the recreation, about eighty-eight thousand in the cemetery. And then counting the allocation we just received in the bills we just received on the middle school, we will have spent eight hundred and eighty-one thousand in county funds for the county match. And then if you look below, the total cost of the middle school at this point is a little over three point three million dollars. The estimated total cost to begin with was about four point three million. And I think maybe we already may have some additional information on that later on. Any questions? Got the budget report. Obviously, we're starting the year over again and all the budgets are looking in good shape for the month of July. Everybody's tracking along just like what we, what we expected it to. Recreation is tracking a little bit ahead, but that's because we made big expenditures for football. And then cemetery's, our grounds is running a little bit ahead because we get some bush hulby, but that'll level this down though. Any questions on the budget? Okay. I did have one budget amendment, part of which we discussed last week in the DSS board meeting. However, got some good news. The Health Department received a five thousand dollar grant to get new dental can pieces. So their clinic will be able to purchase some new small equipment. And then the state finally came forth with what they're going to fund for COVID in the Health Department. That's a little over ninety-seven thousand. And then last week, we discussed the additional funding of three thousand for Lance in DSS. And then the board approved contracting to do a document system for ninety-six hundred dollars a year. So all of that is coming in with new sources of revenue coming in except for the ninety-six hundred dollars that's coming in to the bottom ladder to the expenditure. And if it's pleasing to the board, I'm asking the board to break this budget amendment.
I have your motion to approve budget amendment number one, please. Thank you. Is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you all in favor.
Just one, a couple more items. You'll notice in your packet. There's a quote from Fisher Science Agency. This is from the Sheriff's Department. It's for thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is for them to do field testing for narcotics. And Sheriff Chris budgeted in his budget to pull in ninety-five thousand dollars in his concealed weapons. Money, that's the surplus that he's accumulated in concealed weapons. And he's asking to use that, that fund to fund this expenditure. This is above our spending limit. We do have these. We do have these funds in the budget, won't need a budget amendment, but we do need approval to allow him to purchase that.
Is there a motion to approve, or should you request for expenditure, please? Thank you, all in favor?
And then last but not least is your ballot voting report. I'll leave that for you during the meeting. They, if you turn to the back page, that's really the page that means something. Thankfully, they've got spendable cash again, a little over twenty million dollars. I've known many years there before COVID hit where they were in the hole for spendable cash. And you'll notice the, right above that, they always have to keep thirty days of cash in hand. So basically they've got a reserve of sixty-nine thousand dollars for contingencies and then twenty thousand dollars to spend. And that is just for the, 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 the.
If there's not questions, that's your comments report, but you allowed any comment. Any comments or questions from the board? No, we do not. I apologize that I didn't go get that. I'm sorry, sorry, not talking about your. Okay, I will yield to Rayna for discussion items.
Number eighteen, we'll go through discussion items. I have releases for eight hundred and seventy-five, oh, fifty-five cents, and discoveries of six thousand, seven dollars and twenty-five cents that needs action.
Okay, is there a motion to approve a discovery ever released, please? Thank you. Can we stand? You have a second for the commission of discovery, all in favor, please?
All right, we appoint Meredith Jenkins to travel and tourism board, need action.
Is that your wish? Thank you, okay. We have a motion, is there a second? Second, thank you, all in favor?
Reapoint, reappoint Lynn Cody to the road banking board, need action.
Thank you, is there a second? All in favor?
Okay, then, as discussed earlier, the Santima Lake cleanup by the, was it named Lake?
Santima Lake, I just Santima Lake, yeah, I believe.
Let's see. Yeah, Maxine's, it's the Lake Santima Preservation Group. They're asking to waive the dump fees for when they clean up on that Saturday at twenty-four.
Lake Fontana, lake that is a benefit to all the citizens who enjoy not only using our lakes, but even looking at them to keep them clean and somewhat debris and trash free. So I appreciate that.
It is ranked in the top twenty lakes in the United States.
Awesome.
Some places rank it, and some magazines are ranking it, or.
Yeah.
Put it, it's a, it's a lot to the lake.
If you, if there's, we do, is there a motion to approve?
It's our correction.
Wait.
Somebody's yours.
No, we won't, like Fontana, we couldn't do that either. What they do is they get those roll-off cans and they're going to be donated. Because we, we would be spending all kinds of time with our trucks on the road back and forth. So we've talked to, I got in touch with the guys with the roll-off out here, and they'll donate the roll-offs. We just got to waive the dump. They could set, they could set a couple of those out and it would probably, it would probably take us eight or ten cans to duplicate what they could sit there and roll off and do.
But it helps them a lot to be able to dump that. They're riding there independently, just like T B A, well, T B A did give a small donation on that lake for, for that cleanup, but it's Creighton County, Swain County and Haywood County that does the cleanup, so. Remember motion? Could you wait a second? All in favor? Thank you, guys.
All right, and then is there any other new or old business?
Okay. Anything further or open at this time?
At this time, there is none.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session under G S one forty-three, three eighteen, one, eleven, eight, one, three, five, six, privilege or confidential information to client privileged personnel and or contracts within ten minutes. Is there a motion? Thank you, a second?